Lynette Varino. Mark McLaughlin.
Here.
Eric Alderetti. Bruce Bauer.
Here.
Phil Becerra.
Here.
James Gartner.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If everyone would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we begin the regular calendar, we have a presentation we'd like to make and recognize to the commissioners that were formerly on the Planning Commission. That's Commissioner Sandy Knoll and Commissioner Sean Mill. If they would step forward. We have two proclamations issued by the Planning Commission this evening as a token of our appreciation and in recognition of the service rendered by Commissioner Knoll and Commissioner Mill. The proclamation reads: Whereas Alexander Sandy Knoll has provided over 14 years of valued service to the city of Santa Ana in his capacity for two terms as a Planning Commissioner, whereas Sandy Knoll has exhibited exemplary leadership and civic responsibility through his tenure as a valued member of the Planning Commission; whereas Sandy Knoll has demonstrated a strong commitment to the residents and business community of Santa Ana in his interactions with the public; whereas Sandy Knoll has been a key participant in the development of Santa Ana as a center for economic prosperity, has been a key participant in three award-winning projects including the Triada Development, the Harbor Mixed-Use Transit Corridor Specific Plan, and the Santa Ana Complete Streets Plan. And whereas Sandy Knoll has been an inspiration to the Planning Commission, it's been resolved that we salute and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you. Very kind of you.[202.72][203.32](APPLAUSE)
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate this. We have an identical proclamation to Commissioner Mill. Would you like me to read it?
Yeah.
All right. This is the identical proclamation thanking Commissioner Mill for his service along the lines of the proclamation issued to Commissioner Knoll. And we'd like to thank both of you for your valued service to the commission. Thank you very much. If you'd like to say something?[245.38][245.88](APPLAUSE)
It's an honor to be standing up here with Sandy because Sandy and I were, you know, Santa Ana natives that served on this commission and we've been in this town a long time. And now just, we just have Commissioner Varino left as a Santa Ana native. So it's an honor to be up here with Sandy. But I just wanted to say thanks to our staff. We have a tremendous staff that does a great job, that keeps the city running. And I just want to thank all you guys for all the efforts that you guys do to make us look good up here. I think that you have a thankless job and sometimes folks don't give you the respect that you deserve. And I think that the city's lucky to have you. And I know that the city's in good hands with you folks at the helm. So thank you very much.[297.72][298.42](APPLAUSE)
So at this, we'll open the meeting now with the opening of the public comments. Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agendized items?
Excuse me, Commissioner Bauer, could we take care of the consent item, consent agenda, and item first on page two of the consent calendar?
Which item is that?
Oh, consent calendar in terms of the minutes, adopting the minutes.
Okay, so the...
I'm sorry.
All right, so... Does a member of the public, going back to public comments, does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agendized items? If so, you may fill out a request to speak form with the secretary. And after introduction, you'll have three minutes to speak unless an extension of time is granted by the chairman. Are these agendized items? I haven't seen none. We'll move on to the consent calendar. The first item of business in the consent calendar is, do we have a motion to approve the terms of the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second. So I have a motion by Commissioner McLaughlin and a second by Commissioner Mill. All in favor?
Commissioner Becerra.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Becerra. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a unanimous vote with the absence of Commissioner Varino and Commissioner Alderetti. So we'll now move on to the business calendar portion of the meeting. The next item is Commissioner Communication Disclosures. Do any of the commissioners have anything that they wish to disclose with regard to any of the items on tonight's agenda, Commissioner Mill, or Becerra?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd like to disclose that in addition to numerous emails that all my colleagues on the commission received in regards to public hearing item number four regarding the zoning ordinance amendment number 2016-02, I also received phone calls today from Pam Sopetto and from Ryan O'Golnick.
Anyone else? I'd like to make a disclosure. I spoke with Pamela Sopetto regarding item number four as well today. And I received, I think with all the commissioners, the written communications that we'll disclose shortly. Okay, now we'll open up the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. I'd like to consider the moving item number four to the front of the calendar, if that's agreeable with the rest of the commissioners. Do I have a motion on that?
Is there any motion?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so with the agreement of everyone, we'll move item number four to the front of the calendar. So this is the time and place for the public hearing on item number four, for public hearing zoning ordinance amendment number 2016-02.
I will start the presentation as Ms. McCann actually loads up the slide presentation. Yes, would you please? Yes, this is actually generated by the applicant, the developer for Heritage Village OC LLC, and this is not generated by staff. You might remember that about a year ago, less than a year ago, we came before you with the recommendation to amend the housing opportunity ordinance with some provisions because we had heard from the development community that there were issues related to the housing opportunities ordinance that would be, that we're working against inviting development to Santa Ana and therefore we worked with that and just did our attempt to remove some of the obstacles that we had identified. And then you made a recommendation, the city council amended the housing opportunity ordinance since that time. Okay, we have been asked to provide translation as we speak. Therefore, I'm going to break the speech up so that Mr. Carvajal here can do the translation at the podium. Yes, go ahead, please.
Si, buenas tardes. La razón por nuestra junta esta tarde es que vamos a hablar de la ordenanza. Vamos a hacer unos cambios basados en una aplicación de Heritage Village OC que están buscando opciones para que ellos puedan pagar los costos de las viviendas in lieu in phases en vez de solamente la primera vez.
Since then, the Heritage Village project was one of the first projects that were approved with over 1,200 units of residential, and it's a mixed-use project. And then later we discovered that through our outreach meetings that we had, and Mr. Goldnick, who was representing this particular application, was also present, that they understood the ordinance to say, to mean that if they build the projects that have been approved by the city in phases, then the corresponding housing opportunity ordinance requirements of inclusionary housing or the in-lug fee is associated with that, if the developer chooses to pay the in-lug fee, would also be phased. That was their assumption. And we explained to them that the way that the ordinance is written does not mean that way when it comes to the in-lug fees, and the in-lug fee is payable at once in full prior, at the time that they start applying for their building permits.
Si. Por lo pronto, el proyecto de Heritage Village fue uno de los primeros proyectos que aprobaron la ciudad, que fueron 1,200 unidades de uso residencial con comercial. Hubieron varias juntas en que la persona que está proponiendo el proyecto, que se llama Heritage Village, lo que ellos tenían entendidos es que se podía pagar el costo de este fee que se estableció con la ordenanza, que se llama in lieu, que se podía pagar en ciertas fases. Pero hubo una confusión en donde ellos están pidiendo esta noche que se pueda pagar en fases, sobre en fases en vez de tener que pagar la una vez.
So then we were asked if we could make an interpretation that this could be done in accordance with the phasing of the project. And we said the only way to do that would be an amendment to the ordinance through a series of public hearings and discussions with the stakeholder groups that came to our previous discussions. Since then, they have, the applicant has applied and has paid a full application fee to have the ordinance reviewed with only a request that the in-lug fee also be paid in phases proportional to each phase of the development. That's really their only, really, request at this moment.
Hubieron varias juntas en donde el proponente del proyecto pudo hablar sobre lo que están proponiendo, que en este caso sería pagar en fases en vez de pagar el costo solamente una vez. Y en eso estamos hoy día.
Yes, and then since then, we have had, we can pass to the next slide.
Sure.
We held, we invited the same organizations and groups and individuals who were interested in meeting with us last year to the same meeting this year. It's not a required meeting, but we thought we would want to meet with the stakeholders. And we're getting two different types of responses. One is from the developers. The developer community says that they support this. For the most part, they've told us that they support this amendment because a development, a large development such as the Heritage Village project typically may not be developed by the same developers. Each phase may actually be developed by a different developer at a different time and financed by a different organization. Therefore, to ask for the in-lug fee all at once in one swoop at the beginning of the first phase is a major burden to them that's very difficult to finance. And that's the explanation that staff was given by both the applicant and some of the other developers who actually attended the meeting. On the other hand, we have a number of advocacy organizations that are really advocating for affordable housing and for low-income parts of the community that are really focused on the provision of affordable housing for, you know, our population that needs affordable housing very much, and we need housing very much. So they have a different take on that and they have submitted several letters. Many of, they have many different reasons why they do not support this amendment. One of them is that this ordinance was discussed at length last year and it was supposed to be the last time that we were going to amend it. And we're not changing the amendment. The staff is not proposing this. This is really generated by an applicant. And their main issue is that this is going to delay provision of affordable housing even further. And they have a lot of other comments, and some of them I see in the audience that may want to wish, to voice their concerns about amending the ordinance. At this point, staff is recommending that we, that the Planning Commission recommend moving forward with this amendment because our assessment is that we will get the affordable housing, whether it's built or in the form of in lieu at any phase, no matter what. And we added a recommendation that was actually really generated in one of our, in the meeting we had with stakeholders, that if you do recommend this amendment, that there's language in there that says the in-lug fees that will be phased to the future would be commensurate with whatever in-lug fee is officially enforced at the time. In other words, right now, the in-lug fee for projects such as this one, that are pipeline projects, are $9.35 per square foot. However, there was a recommendation from one of the stakeholders, or some of the stakeholders, that if we do amend this ordinance, that we also write language that they can pay, they should be paying the in-lug fee at the in-lug fee rate that's at place at the time that they pay it. That's the only recommendation that would change our recommendation. We, staff is actually neutral in this one, and we would like to hear what the Planning Commission has to say about that.
Sure. It's a lot of information. Here we go. Basado en varias juntas que se tuvieron, hubieron dos respuestas sobre la ordenanza que se propone. La primera respuesta fue sobre los constructores, las personas que están construyendo las viviendas nuevas. Y lo que ellos están haciendo es que ellos, por lo pronto, quieren que pase esta ordenanza para que ellos puedan pagar en fases. Lo que pasa aquí es que el pago que se tiene que hacer al principio, lo que pasa es que ese pago últimamente solamente se tiene que pagar, el costo se paga y ya las viviendas nunca en realidad se pueden realizar en el proyecto. La otra opción sería si lo hacen en fases, por ejemplo, en la primera fase se puede pagar el pago de un porcentaje, y en la fase segunda y tercera, por ejemplo, hay todavía opciones para que ellos puedan hacer las viviendas en ese mismo lote. O la otra opción sería pagar el costo del in-lug fee. Entonces, esa es la primera respuesta que recibimos. La otra respuesta que recibimos fueron de organizaciones que son proponentes de viviendas de bajos recursos. Ellos tienen varias preguntas y lo que pasa es que no entienden la cantidad de cambios que vamos, que nosotros le dijimos que íbamos a hacer. Nosotros le prometimos que no íbamos a hacer cambios a este código. Pero en realidad, lo que nosotros queremos asegurarlos es que la única cosa es que estamos cambiando cuando se va a pagar el in-lug payment, no que no se vaya a pagar. Entonces, se va a pagar en ciertas fases o se va a pagar solamente en una fase. Pero el fee sigue siendo el requisito. Por lo pronto, nosotros estamos recomendando que se apruebe la ordenancia. Y estamos aquí, sabemos que hay varias personas que quieren hablar y tienen varias preguntas para nosotros. Es todo.
So this concludes staff's recommendation and staff report. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just a couple of questions. So my first question is, in adopting these changes, will the applicant who brought this proposed zoning amendment forward, will he pay any less than what he agreed to when we first saw the entitlements for this project?
No, no. In total, he will not pay any less.
If we could have the question first, and then Bernie's needs to translate.
Yes.
Can you ask that question one more time? I'm sorry.
I just simply asked that if this zoning amendment were to be adopted, would the applicant who brought it forward pay any less than what was, I guess, ordained on him by the city council for his project in in-lug fees?
La pregunta sobre señor Becerra es que si va a haber algún cambio del costo o del pago que va a necesitar ser pagado en este caso, si va a haber una reducción del pago, no.
And then my other question is in regards to the language. This will be on page...
Excuse me, Commissioner Becerra, did you have the answer, Bernie?
Yeah, he actually said the answer.
Oh, you did?
So I can answer that.
No is no.
So the answer is absolutely, absolutely not. The fee will continue to be applied. It's just, the question is whether it can be done in phases or in a single payment. So in this case, the fee will remain the same. It will just be allowed to be in phases.
Okay, and then my next question...
I'm gonna translate that if that's okay.
Yeah, please, please.
La respuesta que dije es que el pago va a ser el mismo pago, solamente que va a ser en ciertos pasos, en vez de tener que pagarlo una vez en adelante.
Thank you, Bernie. My second question is in regards to the language on, let's see, page three of the ordinance.
Okay.
Did you want to check?
La pregunta tiene que ver con la ordenanza en la página número tres.
It speaks of, as the in-lug payments are paid by phase, they would, the respective in-lug fee amount shall be based upon the most recent adopted in-lug fee calculation. So my question is then, so if the applicant were to pay this in phases, is the applicant going to pay more down the road based on paying it, like in the, trying to phrase it right, in the subsequent phases, will he pay more down the road? Or is the amount that he agreed to and the council agreed to, that's it? That's the cap? So he won't be subject to a higher rate later on down the road?
I'll have to defer to Hassan, but I believe...
You can answer the question.
Sure. So the answer for that specific question is whatever established fee is at the time. We don't, I honestly don't know what the future fee would be, but at the point that the fee would be due, the current fee at the time would be what would be payable.
And just, sorry to interject. I would like to interject that this added language was given out of the feedback we got from the stakeholders group, and the Planning Commission may choose to keep it or drop it. That's up to you.
Well, no, I think my, the reason why I'm asking this is because, if you guys can help me understand, do we, the city, have a development agreement with the applicant now? On this project?
We do have a development agreement with the applicant. We have not finalized their housing, affordable housing plan yet. So they do have a development agreement.
That includes a set amount for what they're going to pay for the in-lug fee?
That's right, it does. The amount that's put in their development agreement is consistent with the pipeline projects that were at the time approved, just prior to the entitlement hearings for the project.
So this project brought forward is a pipeline project. The amount of money that they've agreed to pay is not going to change regardless of whether we approve this tonight or not, I'm sorry, whether we recommend approval to the council tonight or not?
Unless, no, it could. If the Planning Commission recommends that the future phases of the in-lug fee should be the same as whatever in-lug fee is at place at that time, the city council could then add language in their ordinance that will supersede the development agreement that this developer has. There is that way.
So in addition, so then right now, the pipeline amount is less than...
Than the actual, the in-lug fee amount for a brand-new project is $15 per square foot. This was a pipeline project, and all pipeline projects were qualified for $9.35.
And we approved them at that?
And that was approved. And this project got approved with that particular pipeline project in-lug fee in its development agreement.
So unless we modify the development agreement, which isn't before us tonight?
It's not before you tonight. Tonight, the only thing that's before you...
Is phases.
Is the housing opportunity ordinance.
Right, and the phase.
And the phasing, yes.
So I'm sorry, that's a lot, Bernie, guys.
It is. We gotta break it up a little better.
La pregunta esta noche tiene que ver con el costo, con el contrato que existe con el constructor y la ciudad, y por lo pronto ese costo son nueve millones de dólares. Y ese costo no va a cambiar o pueda cambiar sin necesidad de regresar aquí al Planning Commission y al Consejo Municipal para que ellos puedan aprobar esos cambios.
Were there any other questions? And I apologize, Commissioner McLaughlin. You know, before we go with that question, I was remiss. I should have said at the beginning of this, if there's anyone that wishes to address the Planning Commission, they're welcome to do so, but they need to first fill out a request for speaker form with the secretary. Comments, I'll remind you, are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted. And the action of the Planning Commission is final following the consent of the city council unless, if allowed by the Santa Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the planning department within 10 days from the date of the commission's action, or unless set for a public hearing by the city council. All right with that? Commissioner McLaughlin? Yes, you should translate. Thank you.
Tienen la opción los que gusten pasar adelante, llenar una forma si gustan hablar, y hay opciones para que vaya a tener otro, otra opción, lo que se llama un appeal, si tienen algún problema con la decisión que se hace esta noche.
Thank you. Now, did you have a question?
Yeah, so let me just, I think there's a couple of ways of looking at the way this is being explained and written, too. Today, the written in-lug fee is $5 for 20 units or less. And for 20 units and more, it's $15. And the pipeline is $9.
$9.35.
$9.35, okay. So those are the three numbers we got. I guess my simple question is, what dictates that fee? I mean, how is that established?
Because that was a fee that we came upon last year as we were looking at the $15 really were set by the city council. The $9.35 was some sort of an averaging of the number of, at the time, there were a number of pipeline projects. Each one of them had negotiated a different fee and a different rate, and some of them a lot less, some of them maybe a little bit more. And to have an even play, playing, even playing field for everyone, the council picked all the pipeline projects that had come up with some sort of an agreement could opt either to pay $9.35 per square foot or go back to their original agreement. And in this particular case, the applicant picked the $9.35.
Señor McLaughlin, tiene alguna pregunta sobre cómo es que se estableció el costo que se tiene que pagar del constructor por cada vivienda que existe? Por lo pronto, hay tres diferentes costos. El primero sería por unidades de menos de 20 unidades, que son $5 por unidad. Y el segundo costo son $20, digo, perdón, por 20 unidades o más, son $15 por unidad. Y por los proyectos que son existentes, donde hay un contrato existente con la ciudad, son nueve dólares con 35 centavos. Y esos son proyectos que ya tienen contrato con la ciudad, que ellos han entrado a un, bueno, un contrato, y eso se ha negociado directamente con la ciudad. Por eso tienen ese costo, nueve dólares y 35 centavos, que esos son los existentes.
Okay, so the next part of my question then, is this on the fee schedule that the city has and updates every year?
Yes.
So given it's on the fee schedule, and typically the fee schedule is based on COLA, COLA rate per year, and if COLA continues to go up, I mean, COLA usually goes up or stays without any movement?
stays without any movement?
The in lieu fee is not subject to COLA. The in lieu fee is subject to occasional reviews, and so, looking at the record to see what's happening with the city council.
Okay.
So, the council can actually adjust that.
So...
It's adopted agreements.
It's an adopted one, so it's not...
It's an adopted one.
Maybe so. It's really not, it's in the fee schedule but not in the fee schedule.
Correct, correct. It's not on that.
No, it's a specific fee.
Okay.
La pregunta esta noche es el costo que acabamos de hablar. Quería saber si está establecido en las formas que tenemos la ciudad donde enseñamos cuáles son los pagos, y cada año esos se ajustan, y dijo que es C O L A, COLA, que quiere traducir, cost of living increase, los costos. En nuestra ciudad, suben cada año el primero de julio. Entonces, esa pregunta la podemos responder.
So, my last part of the question is, therefore, there's nothing in here, nothing in the ordinance that says it will be reviewed every two years, or it'll be reviewed every four years? That's open-ended.
There is a provision that the first review could be back in eighteen months from the time of the adoption of the ordinance. And by just, around the time we get to city council, we'll be just a little shy of that, so we will, it'll be in a few months that we would go back with a report. And then, the purpose of the report was just to see how the in lieu fee and then the Housing Opportunity Ordinance is now working in relation to attracting development. So, and that, and then to see if the fee is playing any role in it. That would be the purpose of the analysis. We're not ready for that yet. We will be in about six months.
La respuesta fue que por lo pronto no tenemos ningún plan de cambiar los, los pagos, el pago, que es necesario, pero quizás en un par de meses estudiamos el asunto y vayamos a ver si hay necesidad de cambiarlo, que era la pregunta del comisionado McLaughlin.
All right. Commissioner Becerra?
So, two questions. First is, we, the planning commission, are only making a recommendation tonight. We are not approving any of the changes.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I missed that part.
You're only making your recommendation, and you're not approving it.
Por lo pronto, la pregunta del comisionado Becerra fue que si esta noche, esta noche vamos a hacer el cambio efectivamente a la ordinanza, y la respuesta es no, solamente estamos haciendo una recomendación al consejo municipal.
And my second question, just for the benefit of everybody here, we've been saying the term "pipeline project," and I don't want anybody to confuse what a pipeline project is versus a project that, if they were to submit an application today, would be treated. So, it's not a difference based on anything other than timing, correct?
Correct.
So, it was, what was the timeframe to which a pipeline project was qualified as a pipeline project?
Any project, so would you like to...
Sure. Sure. La pregunta que tiene el comisionado Becerra tiene que ver con los proyectos que les mencioné que son establecidos, que los llaman "pipeline," que son los proyectos existentes que ya estaban en nuestro sistema antes que se adoptó esta ordinanza.
Okay.
When the Housing Opportunity Ordinance last year was amended, at that time, there were a number of projects, a finite number of projects, that had received entitlements from the city that had not started construction, for many of them for reasons of economics and the economic environment. And so, those projects, without being addressed in the Housing Opportunity Ordinance, would really not know what would apply to them. So, the city council made a provision to specifically address those projects that had gone through the entitlement process and had an entitlement, and how this ordinance would affect them. And in this, in this case, they gave them the option of either sticking with what they had or taking advantage of the provision of the new amended ordinance.
En el tiempo que, la respuesta que dimos que en el tiempo que se estableció la ordinanza, hubieron varios proyectos que existían, que todavía no habían comenzado la construcción. Por lo pronto, ellos habían obtenido todos los permisos con la ciudad, pero no habían empezado el proyecto. Entonces, esos proyectos se llaman "pipeline," y para esos proyectos que eran existentes, el consejo municipal les dio una opción para que ellos puedan seguir con los costos nuevos que se establecieron, o que puedan ellos seguir por las ordinanzas que existían anteriormente.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will open the public comment portion of the meeting. And I will remind everyone, they have three minutes to speak if they filled out one of these cards. And they, I ask that they respect that time limit. You'll see some lights in front of you when you're speaking that'll go from green to yellow and then to red during that time period. So, you'll know when the red light's on that your time is up.
Comisionado Bauer, por lo pronto, les recuerda que si los que gustan pasar adelante para hablar tienen tres minutos para hablar, y en estos hay unas luces que van a indicar exactamente cuánto tiempo tienen para hablar. Tienen tres minutos. Gracias.
Thank you, Bernie. Marina Ramirez, I'm sorry.
Thanks for being patient with me. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Marina Ramirez, and I'm here on behalf of Neighborworks Orange County to state our opposition of the proposed amendment to the Housing Opportunity Ordinance. Neighborworks Orange County, we are an affordable housing organization that helps low-to-moderate income families become homeowners and build stronger communities through an array of educational and financial services. Since 1977, we've been around helping thousands of families secure and preserve their home through the most difficult housing crises. We have worked closely with the Santa Ana community for over thirty-nine years.
Do you want to translate, Bernie?
At the end?
Okay.
Yeah? Yeah, most definitely. And are well aware of the urgent need for affordable housing to address the current housing crisis in the city. So, that's why we strongly oppose this amendment. Necessary policies such as this Housing Opportunity Ordinance are what make affordable housing possible in Santa Ana. As a homeownership center, Neighborworks has partnered with City Santa Ana's Community Development Agency to bridge the financial gap for hundreds of deserving families to find a home through a down payment assistance program or the neighborhood stabilization program. One such case involves Paul Ramirez. He grew up in Santa Ana, and he wanted to find a home for his wife and his daughter to stay close to his family and close to his church. Neighborworks assisted the Ramirez family for the last two years using your down payment assistance program and therefore, and the neighborhood stabilization program, and they're therefore been able to be homeowners here in Santa Ana. I know a lot of other of our colleagues are going to be up to make their claims of why they would oppose this amendment as well. So, we just wanted to come and state our claim of why we oppose it, and we would encourage the planning commissioners to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can I call?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
All right. I want to do my best to paraphrase here. Okay, guys? Neighborworks del Condado de Orange es una organización de bajos recursos, de viviendas de bajos recursos, que ayuda personas de bajos recursos y familias que pueden comprar viviendas con oportunidades de educación y financieras. De 1977, 77, han ayudado miles de familias a asegurar y mantener sus casas entre los tiempos más difíciles. Han trabajados con la ciudad de Santana por treinta y nueve años y saben que hay necesidad para viviendas de bajos recursos para poder mantener la situación económica y de viviendas en nuestra ciudad. Y por lo pronto, nosotros estamos contra los cambios de esta noche. Políticas necesarias como este del Housing Opportunity Ordinance son los que hacen las viviendas de bajos recursos posibles en nuestra ciudad. Como un centro de homeownership, Neighborworks se han establecido con la ciudad para entrar entre un, what's it called? Financial gap. Para miles de personas que necesitan casas, tener recursos para hacer enganches para sus casas, y un programa de estabilización de vecindades. Una persona que se llama Paul Ramirez, es un profesor del grado sexto, creció en nuestra ciudad y quería tener una casa con su esposa cerca de una iglesia donde vivían ellos. Neighborworks los asistió, y por dos años, en 2015, ayudaron para que ellos puedan comprarse una casa y dar un enganche con el programa que les comenté, the Neighborhood Stabilization. El acceso a recursos que son saludables, casas de bajos recursos, es un componente integral para establecer una comunidad fuerte. Y por lo pronto, en nuestro caso, donde hay pocos, pocas casas que son disponibles, es más y más difícil para rentar, y mucho más, tener una casa en nuestra ciudad. El costo de las rentas están subiendo bastante, y la salud de nuestra familia y nuestra seguridad están comprometidas. Entendemos la importancia de casas, entendemos la importancia del Housing Opportunity Ordinance, y quisiéramos prometer o promover la habilidad que haya casas de bajos recursos. Y por eso, nosotros quisiéramos darles un aplauso a la ciudad por varios años donde creyeron, donde se estableció esta ordinanza. Los cambios que se están proponiendo esta noche quitarían todo el trabajo que nosotros hicimos. El consejo municipal aprobó esta ordinancia, y los costos que se requerieron necesitaban estar pagados antes de que se dara el permiso. Y por lo pronto, lo que estamos requiriendo esta noche, de que se pague en fases, sería algo que no sería cierto, y por lo pronto, no se podrían establecer las casas. Estamos opuestos a los cambios al Housing Opportunity Ordinance.
All right. Luis Armiento?
You're good?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks. Bernie's doing a really good job translating, and thanks to all the staff that are helping out with, to make sure that this process is more inclusive, and that's a little bit what I want to talk about. My name is Luis Armiento. I'm part of the Centro Cultural de México. Good evening to all of you. And the Centro has been part of a collaborative called Sacred for several years, which has really fought to make the planning process more inclusive. And that's why we're here. And if some of you are still wondering why, you know, maybe a cultural center is interested in what's going on with the housing ordinance, has a lot to do with the fact that a huge, huge part of our community are low-income folks. And the type of economic development that is happening here in Santana, in Orange County, the type of jobs that are growing, if you look at the category of jobs that are most growing, are mostly low-paying jobs. Service sector jobs is one of the majority types of jobs here in Santa Ana. That's why we have such a large low-income population. And the rising cost of rent has led to a really, really big need for affordable housing. And if you go into some of the low-income neighborhoods, you see that. You see the greater overcrowding. You see just a really big need in our community for affordable housing. And so, that's why we're here today. This same need for affordable housing has been identified by the city in the housing element in the strategic plan. And we just are here to say that the amendment to the Housing Opportunity Ordinance would be a step in the wrong direction. We understand that a developer is trying to make their market rate project happen. However, the monies that are needed for affordable housing are very much urgently needed. It's an urgent need in our city. And so, we're asking the commission to really take that into account in your decision today and in your recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I translate myself?
Sure. Terrific.
Me llamo Luis Armiento, del Centro Cultural de México, y este, el Centro, como muchas otras organizaciones, nos hemos unido en el colaborativo Sacred para que el proceso de planeación aquí en la ciudad sea más incluyente. Y gracias a Bernie, a las personas del staff de la ciudad que están tratando de hacer eso. También venimos porque la necesidad de vivienda para familias de bajos ingresos es muy grande en nuestra ciudad. Este, el tipo de trabajos que se están creando ahorita, generalmente, son trabajos de bajos salarios, y las rentas que se están dando son cada vez más altas. Por eso, hay una grande necesidad de vivienda de bajos ingresos. Y simplemente, este cambio que quieren hacer hoy sería un paso en la dirección equivocada, no? El recurso es requerido para vivienda de bajos ingresos, no para los proyectos de vivienda a precio del mercado. Y nada más? Gracias.
That's all. Gracias. All right. Anna Ursua?
Good evening, planning commissioners, city staff, comunidad presente. My name is Anna Ursua. I'm a campaign coordinator with the Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities Initiative. We are a ten-year health initiative led by Santana residents, adults and youth, and community-serving organizations. We work so that all young people and all people in Santana are healthy socially and emotionally, and so that all families thrive. Over the years, our collaborative has supported actions like the Sunshine Ordinance to ensure that all people reap the benefits of growth and development. With the Sunshine Ordinance, we've ensured that notification goes to all residents so that when the community is informed, together we can streamline development, and together we can celebrate the growth that comes to our city. Since then, we've been able to see a lot more information published online. We were able to accomplish a five-year strategic plan, and we are able to see a lot more participation in our civic engagement from all people in Santana. Similarly, we celebrate the Housing Opportunities Ordinance because we know the urgency that exists for affordable housing now, because families currently live in overcrowded situations, not by choice, but by need, because we know that the increased homelessness is every day more apparent, more visible, and we need a solution now. For several reasons, I come to speak today in opposition to the amendments of the Housing Opportunities Ordinance. One, the need is great now. Rent burden requires people to pay over sixty percent of what they make. And what that looks like is paying, choosing to pay rent instead of paying medicine, choosing to pay rent instead of getting the healthy foods that will make their children grow well and grow healthy. Number two, paying in one phase, paying from the beginning, paying the in lieu fees at the beginning allows for the much-needed creation of affordable housing immediately. Number three, the feasibility of development projects that incur this, that incur the in lieu fees is feasible for investors. I would like to hear what the profit margins are for projects like the Heritage Project, because this claim is not new. If we asked, we might hear fifty, sixty, seventy million dollars in profit. We've worked with developers in the past who have not walked away, even when the city feared they would do so. Ironically, the developments that would be under threat... Ironically, the developments that would be under threat are the affordable housing projects that we need now. Lastly, I oppose the Housing Opportunities Ordinance amendments because you can choose to invest in us. One thousand two hundred new luxury units can create sixty-nine units of affordable housing today, not five, ten, twenty years from now. The housing opportunities should be celebrated and serve as an example nationwide and we should keep it intact. Lastly, I would like to ask folks who have joined us today, if you are a young person who would benefit from affordable housing with your families, if you are a resident of Santana who would benefit from affordable housing now, I would like for you to please stand up. Por último quisiera pedir que si eres un joven que vives en Santana o un residente que vives en Santana y te beneficiarías de vivienda bajo costo que se puedan parar ahorita. If you are an organizer, if you are a community-serving organization and you benefit from affordable housing today, please stand up. This is the people of Santana we ask you to invest in, so that all people can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Anna Ursua, soy coordinadora de campañas para comunidades saludables donde trabajamos para que todas las personas sean saludables social y emocionalmente y para que todas las familias prosperen. Sobre los años hemos apoyado acciones como la Ordenanza Sunshine que han permitido que todos los residentes sean notificados y juntos podamos apoyar desarrollo que beneficia a toda la comunidad. Desde entonces hemos podido ver más información publicada en el internet, el plan estratégico se ha avanzado y ya hemos visto más participación en nuestra ciudad. Similarmente hoy celebramos la Ordenanza de Oportunidades de Vivienda porque sabemos la urgencia que existe para vivienda ahora, porque las familias que actualmente viven en Santana viven en condiciones de asinamiento, no por, no por, porque lo escogen sino porque lo necesitan, porque sabemos que hay cada día más indigencia, más gente sin casa en esta ciudad y lo vemos claramente. La necesidad es grande ahora, el peso de la renta significa pagar más de sesenta por ciento de tus ingresos, significa escoger entre pagar renta o pagar tu medicina. Pagar en una sola fase permitiría que se pudiera crear la vivienda de bajo costo inmediatamente. El que un urbanizador pueda construir vivienda no está tanto a riesgo como el que las familias puedan tener un lugar donde vivir. Hemos escuchado antes que el urbanizador no va a poder construir y sin embargo no se han ido. Irónicamente, lo único que sí está bajo riesgo son las viviendas de bajo costo que se podrían construir ahora. Último porque ustedes pueden escoger invertir en nosotros. Mil doscientos nuevas unidades pueden crear sesenta y nueve de bajo costo ahora, no cinco, diez o veinte años desde hoy. Invierten nosotros, los que se pararon hoy invierten la comunidad de Santana. Gracias.
Thank you and thank you for providing the translation. By the way, if you provide your own translation, that's not going to be accounted against your three minutes. Jose Hernandez.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jose Hernandez. I come representing O-Cord, Orange County Communities Organized for Responsible Development, a local nonprofit who fights for good jobs, strong neighborhoods and an inclusive democracy for all residents in Orange County. Part of O-Cord's mission is to fight to ensure that affordable housing and community benefits are an integral part of the development that developers and cities have in mind. In November 2011, the City Council adopted a Housing Opportunity Ordinance that encourages affordable housing development in Santa Ana. This ordinance, which is similar to those like Huntington Beach, is a powerful and much-needed tool to allow affordable housing projects to get off the ground. We understand that the organization, the folks like Vineyard Development and others who first applied for this, first agreed to the terms of the ordinance, which includes a requirement for ten percent affordable housing or payment in lieu of fees upfront. So that they claim now that they do not, I feel it's disingenuous. And so now they have opted to try and bait and switch by attempting to amend the city ordinance, claim that it's needed for the feasibility of their project. Rather than paying close to ten million upfront, they would now make payments on this amount. We strongly feel that this amendment is a bad policy that will hurt Santa Ana's ability to address the housing emergency that the city is facing. The ordinance provides millions of dollars to organizations like those that have spoken for projects that address the lack of housing and then now it is being gutted by this amendment. It will impact current projects, not just the ones for this project. And so if the amendment is approved, it will allow for other developers trying to do housing projects to make amendments in lieu. And so this is a bad policy and not in line with the progress being made to address the issue of the lack of low-cost housing for our cash-strapped residents. New developments can not only be high-priced lofts, housing must also be accessible to the hard-working community members in desperate need of housing. We urge the commission to stay true to the goals of the strategic plan to make Santana inclusive and equitable when it comes to housing by recommending to vote against this amendment to the Housing Opportunity Ordinance. The American dream is falling more and more out of the hands of the average resident and current ordinance meets, and the current ordinance allows for development of affordable housing in Santana. On behalf of the residents and workers of Santana whom we represent, we hope you will stand with the working class of Santana and vote against this proposed ordinance. Thank you. I'll go ahead and translate now. Yeah, improvisationally. Este, me llamo Jose Hernandez y estoy hablando a través de, representando O-Cord, responsabilidades del Conado de Orange, organizadas para el desarrollo responsable. Este, una organización lucrativa que pelea por buenos trabajos, una fuerte, fuertes vecindarios y una democracia inclusiva. Para todos los residentes del Conado de Orange, parte de nuestra misión es pelear para vivienda asequible y beneficios comunitarios que son una parte integral de lo que, este, que es parte de lo que se necesita tener para desarrollar nuestra ciudad. En noviembre de 2011, el Consilio adoptó la Ordenanza de Vivienda Asequible para darle para más oportunidad para vivienda asequible que sea desarrollada en Santana. Esta ordenanza es muy similar a otra ciudad como Huntington Beach, este, y es realmente poderosa para poder dejar que estos proyectos sean, este, posibles. Los compañías que están tratando de agarrar este, este desarrollo ahorita, primero dijeron que estaban a favor de esto pero, y que con la ordenanza que requiere diez por ciento que sea puesta para, del desarrollo sea vivienda asequible o pagar una multa, este, en vez. Pero ahorita ya están tratando de cambiar y decir que creían que no estaban conscientes de ese reglamento. Entonces, este, en vez de pagar casi diez millones de dólares ahora van a poder hacer los empagos. Pensamos que, fuertemente, que esta enmienda sería mala póliza y podría lastimar la seguridad de Santana a poder tener más vivienda asequible. Yo sé que la ordenanza provee millones de dólares para organizaciones y proyectos para poder, este, dar vivienda asequible y ahorita le va a impactar eso y proyectos del futuro pues le podría impactarlos. Esta enmienda si sea aprobada va a dejar que este, que otros desarrolladores puedan, este, no tener que pagarlo todo al principio. Esas mala póliza y va en contra del progreso que hemos hecho para tratar de, este, darle atención a los bajo costos, las viviendas de bajos costos que hay. Este, nuestro nuevo desarrollo no puede nada más ser, este, lofts de precios altos, también tiene que ser, este, vivienda asequible para nuestros, con los métodos de comunidad que tanto la necesita la vivienda. Queremos dar a la comisión que esté mantenga, este, comprometida al plan estratégico de Santana que quiere hacer esta ciudad más inclusiva y más, que haga más equidad para aquellos que, este, que están viviendo buscando la, este, vivienda. Entonces estamos recomendando que voten en contra de esta ordenanza porque el sueño americano está, este, más, más alejado de ser una realidad para tanto de nuestros residentes en Santana y entonces que esta ordenanza los ayuda. Y entonces aparte de los residentes y trabajadores de Santana quienes representamos estamos esperando que estén al lado de los trabajadores de Santana y los residentes. Gracias.
Gracias. All right, Cesar Corverrubias.
Good evening, Commissioner Cesar Corverrubias, Executive Director of the Kennedy Commission, an organization that works on policy around Orange County for affordable housing development. We are here in opposition to the proposal, to the amendment to the Housing Opportunities Ordinance. I think a lot of our colleagues have given some significance in terms of the need of affordable housing, why it's so necessary that those fees be paid upfront, but also going back to the context of how this ordinance got amended initially and how it evolved. At the table were developers, advocates, the applicant himself was at the table, negotiated this particular version of the ordinance and at that time there was a lot of incentives that went forth, including the ability to pay a lesser inclusionary housing fee if your project was in the pipeline. In addition to that, you could take advantage to incentives that were put into the ordinance to make your project more dense, more units on it, if you choose to take advantage of that, through a density bonus program that was instituted into that. Also, by the developer taking those actions and moving forth with entirely the whole project on its own, took away the opportunity for any future development on those parcels. So whether it's affordable or new market rate, it can't be developed, it's tied up already. Now, going back to the ordinance, it clearly states that any fee, any inclusionary housing fee, has to be paid upfront regardless of whether you are pulling one permit for a commercial or for residential, if it's a mixed-use project. So in your first, your first permit, you would have to pay the fee in full and I think that's an agreement staff has acknowledged and the city has acknowledged that that's the interpretation. There has not been a different interpretation, including in our conversations with the Housing Element Working Group or the Housing Opportunities Working Group. So we feel that it's really disingenuous to come before you and ask for an amendment when this was just negotiated eight months ago, there hasn't been even the year, there is provisions in the ordinance that allow for us to revisit that and I think that was the intent and eighteen months or three years, I don't recall what the date was, we would go back and revisit what's working, what's not. And we all knew that we were giving and taking from this and we knew that us as advocates were not going to get everything. In fact, we made a calculation during those discussions that by reducing that in lieu fee, we were losing over twenty million dollars in potential in lieu fees. But that was a bargain that the developer chose to take along with all the other incentives in exchange for providing that in lieu fee that was calculated at that point. So we strongly would encourage the council, pardon me, the Plan Commission, to not accept the amendment, to reject the amendment. I think another important thing to highlight is, is this the appropriate way to go forth in reaching the objectives that the developer wants to achieve? You could probably go back to your development agreement and amend that or you go back and ask the council to look at your project as a whole and take it over again. I just don't feel that this is a vehicle to do so. A lot of folks in the community put a lot of work into this ordinance, a lot of folks in the community provided feedback, this developer was at the table, had an opportunity to review those documents, their attorneys had the opportunity to read those documents and all the amendments were accepted at that point by all parties. So I just think that that's, what's fair is fair and we should really look at that and not approve this amendment.
All right, very good. I think we have some equipment, it looks like they're rolling out some equipment for translation services, so if anyone needs translation, Bernie if you could communicate that to the audience up here at the podium.
For those of you in this event, sorry to interrupt you. For those of you that need translation services, those who need, uh, audio, para explicar el español, levante la mano.
So will we need that speaker translated? Or were you, oh, was anyone else, did anyone else need translation of those comments? Are we good then? All right. Then the next speaker, Lynette Guzman.
I am a resident of the city of Santa Ana and also part of the Santa Ana Active Streets Coalition, also known as SAS. We advocate for access to safe active transportation for our residents and work very closely with those who walk or bike as their main mode of transportation. Some of the youth or families in our programs live in overcrowded homes or apartments paying over one-third of their earnings a month for rent. With these living conditions, many have expressed not having any space to store a bicycle or have had their bicycle stolen in the compact apartment complexes they live in. Given these narratives, SAS believes that responsible development should include not only the safe infrastructure and facilities needed for those who bike or walk, but for affordable housing in our communities. Access to affordable housing is a key component of a healthy community. Therefore, we are strongly opposed to the proposed amendment to the city's Housing Opportunity Ordinance. SAS is made up of students, residents, working professionals and organizational representatives working together to cultivate community participation in the planning and decision-making of our communities. Through our advocacy and community engagement efforts, we have led policy change for safe infrastructure and healthy living in the Downtown Complete Streets Plan, the General Plan Circulation Element and Harbor Mixed-Use Transit Corridor Plan. We have hosted educational workshops to teach residents the key concepts to equitable development. In all of our workshops, meetings or events, the issue of affordable housing has always been mentioned and discussed as a need that will best serve the community that is already using active transportation as their main mode of transportation. We are in the midst of a housing affordability crisis. The current ordinance responds to a great community need and promotes and ensures the development of affordable housing. The requirement to pay one-hundred percent of in-lu fees prior to first building permit is good policy and standard practice. The in-lu fees are desperately needed to develop affordable housing now. The developers' request to amend the ordinance, to delay payment of the fees, will delay affordable housing and create a risk for future housing. This request to delay fees is bad policy and not one that SAS supports. We need safe infrastructure for residents that are of low income and use a bicycle or bus or walk as their main mode of transportation. Therefore, we need affordable housing for all residents that are of low income. Both demands are priorities and investing in safer infrastructure and affordable housing will evidently promote equitable land use for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette. Nancy Mejia.
Buenas noches a todos que están aquí. My name is Nancy Mejia and I am here representing Latino Health Access. We serve over five thousand families each year in Santana and we know for a fact, because we collect this data internally, that ninety percent of the families that we serve make under thirty thousand dollars per year, that's household income. When you account for that, with median rent in Santana, we know it's about a thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per month, which is twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars a year. So we know that our families are struggling each year, they're struggling to pay their rent, whether they're renting or owning, they're struggling to pay their mortgages. We have seen many families leave Santana because they can no longer afford housing and we have also seen a lot of the families that we serve end up homeless. And I'm sure you see a lot of the families that are homeless in Civic Center, just as the rest of us do. I preface with all of this to tell you that we are in a housing crisis in Santana and that I actually call an affordability crisis. Building market-rate housing is not going to get us out of this problem and the city knows this and so therefore, the city has worked on, with the community and developers, in updating the Housing Opportunity Ordinance. As a lot of people have mentioned today, it went through a vetting process, the community agreed, the developers agreed and the council passed the ordinance. And so we are actually confused ourselves, just as the developers are. In February 2016, City Council approved the Heritage Project. It included a requirement to pay one-hundred percent of in-lu fees prior to the first building permit, which was nearly ten million dollars in in-lu fees. The developer is asking to amend the city ordinance to fix their problem at the expense of the community need for affordable housing and asking the city to take the risk. The developer is providing no guarantee that they will pay those fees in future phases and the future phases may never get built, which is why the city requires to have it paid in the first building permit. And so we are confused about why we are backtracking. If we've already passed policy, if the developer knew upfront and the community is saying we need more affordable housing today, Mr. Hagani and staff mentioned that this would not affect affordable housing and so we understand that while it doesn't change the amount of money that goes into the fund... the fund, it will delay the amount of money that we count on year after year. People are ending up homeless today, they're leaving Santana today, we need affordable housing today. Not in five years, not in 10 years, not in 20 years, people can no longer wait. And also, paying in phases doesn't account for inflation, as you heard earlier. This would be, amending this would be bad business and bad policy for Santana. We urge you to please reject the recommendation to amend this. It would be setting a very dangerous precedent in Santana, which tells the public that we prioritize developer interests over community interests, that we prioritize luxury and market-rate housing over housing opportunities that are affordable for everyone, including the most vulnerable sectors of our communities. Thank you.
Aracely Robles.
Mi nombre es Aracely Robles, y yo soy una residente de la ciudad de Santana. El motivo de que yo esté aquí apoyando que no se aprueben estos cambios a la ordenanza de vivienda es porque me preocupa que unas personas vengan y decidan lo que pasa en nuestra ciudad. Cuando se supone que tenemos personas que tienen que cuidar los intereses de su comunidad, de los residentes que somos nosotros, no podemos permitir que vengan y cambien hoy esto, mañana otra cosa, porque ellos están cuidando sus intereses. A ellos no les preocupa la vida de nosotros. Ahorita, yo tengo dos semanas para ser una persona homeless con mis hijos. Mi hija está preocupada si va a tener o no sus cosas de la escuela. Cuando unas personas quieren venir y cambiar, a sus intereses la ordenanza. Por favor, yo les pido, piensen en la comunidad. Nosotros somos personas trabajadoras, nosotros somos personas que nos involucramos para mejorar nuestra ciudad de Santana. Por favor, no permitan que el poder y el dinero venga y decida por nuestra ciudad. Porque yo confío que en la ciudad de Santana tenemos buenos representantes que escuchan a su comunidad. Porque si no, van a venir ellos ahorita, cambian una cosa, mañana cambian otra cosa, nosotros esto no es un juego, es nuestra vida. Tener una vivienda digna es un derecho humano para todos. Y si yo tuviera una varita mágica y los pudiera poner en mi lugar para que vean lo que sufrimos nosotros en la comunidad, y veo que sí lo cambiarían y apoyarían más a nosotros. Yo les pido, por favor, que escuchen, no pongan su corazón en estos cambios, porque nosotros no somos personas de segunda clase. Nosotros somos seres humanos que valemos mucho, igual que las personas que quieren venir a cambiar, la única diferencia es que ellos tienen el dinero, pero nosotros tenemos el poder, porque la comunidad está en el poder. Y yo sé que ustedes son las personas indicadas para poder escucharnos. Yo les pido, por favor, por favor. Yo tengo un hijo con una condición mental, y no por eso es una persona menos que ustedes. Él vale mucho, mucho, mucho para mí. Por favor, escúchenos, escúchenos, escúchenos. La ordenanza de vivienda no puede ser manejada por unas personas, donde son 1,200 viviendas, cuando 60 personas se pueden beneficiar, donde nuestras viviendas ya no va a haber abuso, porque muchos de los abusos sexuales en nuestros niños ocurren por el asinamiento en nuestra comunidad. Todas esas cosas las podemos evitar si ustedes realmente gobiernan para nosotros y escuchan con su corazón. Porque ahorita, 3 millones, son 3 millones. El costo de vida está subiendo, de cinco a diez años, esos 3 millones se convertirán en un millón, que no se haría la diferencia, pero sí se haría una diferencia ahorita. Si se prueban otros proyectos de vivienda accesible, se van a beneficiar familias enteras. Y si ustedes tienen hijos, tienen sus padres, ¿qué les gustaría que vivieran sus hijos con dignidad? No lo merecemos todos. Sí lo merecemos. Por eso, por favor, escúchenos, escúchenos, y escuchen a la comunidad, escúchenos. Gracias.
Bueno, gracias.
Good evening, my name is Aracely Robles. I am a resident of Santana. I come to tell you that I worry that some people are coming and wanting to, and telling us to change an ordinance. It seems it is their interest and not our interest that they are looking for. In two weeks, I will be at risk of being homeless myself. My daughter, who is a school-aged girl, worries that she might not have her school supplies in time because we struggle with paying that or paying rent. Think about, think about your hard-working residents of Santana. They have the money, but we have the power. I trust that you are good representatives and that you will listen to what your community is telling you. This is not a game for us. Housing is a human right. I wish I could have a magic wand so you can see how much we suffer, how hard we work, and so that you would listen with your hearts. We are not second-class citizens, we are worth a lot. I ask you that you please listen, listen, listen. I have a son who has mental disabilities, but he is not worth less than anybody else. 1,200 units of housing can build those 69 affordable housing, because that will make a difference in the sexual abuse that we face because of overcrowding. I trust that you will listen with your hearts and that you can help avoid worsening of That cost of living, those three, the cost of living is increasing, and those 3 million will be worth 1 million later. We ask that you listen to entire families, that you think of your sons and your daughters, that you would wish that they have housing opportunities as well. We are all worthy, please listen. Thank you.
Rosa Isela Lopez. Is she here? Rosa Isela? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name is Rosa Isela Lopez. I am a community organizer with OCOR, Orange County Communities Organized for Responsible Development. As everybody said, you know, we strongly oppose to the amendment, and I personally organize communities in Santa Ana, and I can see how they are struggling, leaving several families in one apartment or one house. So now that they have the opportunity to have affordable housing, we have this developer who comes and wants to change on their own interest. I believe we should see for the people that is, the citizens that live in Santa Ana, your city also, I don't live here in the city of Santa Ana, but I work here, I know the struggle that they have. So I really urge you to not to change, not to amend this opportunity that they have. The houses are hired every year, so if they pay in phases, like they said, the money's not going to be worth later. So please, I urge you not to change, not to do amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I also have Pamela Zepetto for the applicant. I don't know if there's any other comments before that, before she speaks. Did you have any others? Okay, Pamela.
Thank you, I'm Pamela Zepetto with Alliance Residential and also Vineyard Development. One of the things that I think it's very important to understand in this request is that the fee that is required of the particular project will remain the same and will be paid. There are no other impact fees in the city right now that are paid in full at once, but they are paid as the building permits are pulled. In all fairness to the discussion about what the expectation was when this particular project was approved, it was our understanding, when you read the ordinance, that we would be allowed to pay the fee as the residential project was developed through, for each portion that it was developed. And I believe that was an honest disagreement and an honest misunderstanding of how that ordinance was to be applied to us. The, I think one question that I would like you to consider tonight is that there is a scenario that has not been discussed, and that is that where the developer pays the full impact fee, what happens if that entire project is not built? The city would be collecting an impact fee for the entire project where, in fact, only a portion of that impact was created. And I think that is a legal question that has yet to be vetted. I think that, I think the question is, would then the city owe back to the developer the fees, that portion of the fees that the impact did not, was not created, where that impact was not created? Essentially, this is an impact fee, and I think that it is levied as those units are, that impact is created as those units are being built. So the question then is, does the city, would the city have to reimburse those dollars if the project is not fully completed because of an economic downturn? If the fee is paid in its entirety upfront, then the city, the concern I have is that then can the city redispers those fees for an affordable housing project if that affordable, if they are liable to have to reimburse some of those fees back because the entire project is not built? So I think that's something that you should consider as a commission about what that liability is for the city to disperse those dollars for another affordable, for an affordable housing project that is not then, cannot then be reclaimed back to the city. We respectfully disagree that the market housing is not important, it does provide needed housing in the community, and additionally, it is paying the in-lu fees towards the funding of affordable housing. Paying in phases allows the city also, at this point, to gain tranches of money that they can use to fund more than one housing project. Each tranche of fee will be around 3.5 million dollars. That's enough to fund and bridge a gap in an affordable housing project so that you can get more than 60 units of affordable housing. I've heard a couple of times tonight that the expectation was that only 60 units would be built. I think that you should, as a city, be able to leverage those dollars to get far more affordable housing than that. So with that, that concludes our testimony.
With that, the public hearing on this portion of the item is now closed, and we'll bring it back to the commission for any comments or questions from the commissioners.
Commissioner Bauer? Vice Chair Bauer?
Commissioner Gardner?
So I have a question again for Hassan, just to kind of recap. So the fee, the reason they want to break it up is because they're trying to phase the project in several phases. Could they essentially get several permits? Could they break up the permits in phases too? Or is it better, are they still trying to get one permit but phase construction?
Typically, a project gets all of their entitlement, their planning permits, at once. But then the building, they can choose to build at once together, or they can choose to build in phases. If they choose to build in phases, they can get their building permits in phases.
In phases? So could the fees also be due in phases with the building permit, which is what they're proposing?
I think Ms. Zepetto mentioned this, and she would be correct, that the other impact fees, such as library impact fees, or sometimes we have parks impact fees, those are usually calculated in phases according to when they actually do the construction, and usually they're tied to the valuation of construction.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Oh, Commissioner McLaughlin? Nope? Commissioner Becerra?
Well, in listening to everything, I think if this was coming before us, and there was some sort of negotiation as far as how much the developer would be paying, I would definitely have big concerns. You know, they came forward with entitlements, asking for certain things, and part of that agreement was to pay a certain amount in order to provide a certain level of affordable housing. The way that I've seen this presented to us today, this was a clarification, when I read this, I could see it going either way. I mean, when you read this, it's really just a matter of putting a comma in the right place if you wanted to. Staff went above and beyond and added more language to not only strengthen it, but prevent the opportunity for someone to come in and phase it later on another project, and then all of a sudden, you know, escape higher fees as they go along. Because I know, I heard somebody, or a couple of folks say that there was a concern that if they were able to phase it, that the monetary value would not be the same today as it would be down the road, whereas the language in this proposed ordinance says it would allow for the fee to be approved to increase. So the way I see this, it really is language cleanup. I appreciate everybody for coming out tonight, and I appreciate what everybody's saying, but everything that was being discussed today, I don't think any of us up here, at least I'll just say for myself, I don't think any of us up here are saying that we don't believe that there should be something done. And I think that what was agreed to in the original approval, there was an agreement to provide a certain amount of fees. Those fees have got to be provided. Unless the council chooses to change that arrangement, I don't see how that changes here. Whether they provide it in phases like they would when they provide their, you said, park fees, library fees, and those are all vital services to our community as well. So in looking at this, if there was a loss in fees, I would have major concerns. But as staff and everybody that's commented with knowledge about the situation with this particular developer, it's hard for me to see how this particular proposal would negatively impact the ability to provide those fees for affordable housing in the city.
Do you have a comment as well? Commissioner McLaughlin?
I guess the comment that I have is that when you look at phasing of construction, we're looking at the fact that, I mean, everybody that came before us said we have a housing problem now, and we have to do something now. And I don't disagree with that at all. I mean, we do have a housing problem, we have a big housing issue, and we need to do something. But when you look at phased construction and the proposal that's on the table here, this doesn't, whether we do, whether we tell them that they have to do in-lu upfront 100%, or they do it on a phased basis, at the end of the day, the developer is the one that's building the buildings, and they're building them on their, on their property, hopefully, in this particular case, maybe not, but they're building the buildings. And so their controlling the phasing, the phasing of the process is controlling the construction all along, unless I'm mistaken on that. Is there some... So, I mean, if the contractor has six phases or six different developers, they're all going to be building to their, to their schedule, and I guess we're not going to solve the problem. I think, you know, unfortunately, I just say that this is a flaw that was, you know, the fact that it was set up the way it was in the beginning is somewhat of a flaw of the original ordinance, and we're coming back after a period of time to kind of fix that problem. But I don't see us being able to solve the immediate housing problem any faster, whether we accept or reject this phasing proposal, unless I missed something.
Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I, you know, as Commissioner McLaughlin's saying, yes, we have the housing crisis. One thing that thankfully we're seeing throughout Orange County is other cities are taking on the affordable housing situation, and they've passed their own ordinances. With that, I'd like to either ask staff or anybody that can answer, other cities that have similar ordinances to us, some sort of requirement for provision of affordable housing, are they requiring folks that, or developers that provide in-lu fees? Are they requiring them to pay everything upfront? Or are they allowing the opportunity to phase them in as well?
My experience is with only one other community that has, it's not very common, there are probably four or five cities around that have actually committed themselves to afford similar ordinances, and we're exemplary in that we have done that.
to afford similar ordinances, and we're exemplary in that we have done that and been willing to commit to it. The one that I've worked with and am most familiar with requires the developer to state outright whether or not they will pay at the time of their entitlements. And as a result of that, they're required, and, and their density is based on whether or not they pay upfront, or whether or not they build as part of their construction for sale product. And in that instance, they get greater credits. They, that city decided that they wanted to encourage the developers to build the affordable housing units on site, and so they, once they were constructed, the density was set, so it was based, they got a 10% density bonus as a result of that.
If I could just stop, I understand that the whole concept of the density bonuses and the allowable things, but I guess what I'm trying to really focus in on is, so once the entitlements are granted, whether the developer receives a density bonus, parking variance, whatever those are, I guess where I'm concerned is actual payment of the fees.
They don't pay the fee. What I'm saying is, they have to decide whether they're going to pay the fee, or whether they're going to construct the units because of the density bonus right up front.
Fair enough.
And then they can't, if they can't sell those units, they may come back and ask, "Oh, can we take them off and pay the fee?"
Understood, but, but so when they're at that point, let's go back to, they have a choice between building them on site or paying the fee. So let's go down the path of paying the fee. When they say they're going to pay the fee in whatever city that you're referring to, do they pay it upfront, or are they allowed to pay it for a phase?
Per unit basis.
Per unit, so that would be a phase?
It's a, it's a per unit basis. When they build, come in for a building permit, they pay it at the building permit fee, that proportion.
That would, that would be a phase?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's what I'm trying to get to. So in the city that you're referring to, as they pull a permit for a building, a unit, they pay that fee there?
Yes, they pay that fee.
And then when they go to the next unit and construct that unit, they pay the fee there? Okay, so what I was trying to get at then is, so other cities do allow for the phasing?
They do allow for phasing. Some do.
Fair enough. I'm just saying, is it, has it been done in other places? So that's what I was trying to get to. Thank you for that. That's, that's really, that was my question. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I had a comment. With the housing opportunity ordinance, there's two opportunities for the builder to comply. There's either they pay the in lieu fee, or they build it themselves. And it's always my preference, and I've heard others say it as well, the preference is that the builder build that affordable housing themselves. Then there's no question, you know, where that money goes in the future, we know where it's going. So I like the way it's structured right now currently, because it's a disincentive. It provides a disincentive for the builder. They've got the two options. If they want to do it in phases, and it's going to be burdensome, then they can, they can choose to build the housing themselves instead of paying the in lieu fee payment. So I like it the way it is currently, and I don't, and for that reason, I'm going to vote against it, the recommendation.
Do we have another comment?
For the record, I would like to, in addition to the written communication that you all received, which was 14 items, 11, three in support and 11 in opposition, I was received 55 letters of opposition. I just got that before the meeting, for the record.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five in opposition.
All right. Thank you. All right, and with that, I'll entertain a motion on the item. Commissioner Gardner?
Let me dig this up. Well, before I make a motion, I guess I would like to make a comment, if I could. I mean, I'm sympathetic to the passion of the people in the audience, because I, you know, it is a struggle for housing, and, and one of the things that, that Santa Ana has been fortunate, I've lived here almost 30 years and have watched it grow amazingly, and it's because of the development that's been encouraged. And we wouldn't even have this conversation if it wasn't for the developers being encouraged to come to Santa Ana. And, you know, there's a lot of hurdles to building a big development. I can, I'm an architect, so I get it, but I think that the phasing, it doesn't seem unfair to me. It also seems as though we're going to get the money or the units, one way or another. So I'd like to make, make a motion to approve Amendment Number 2016-02, Strategic Plan Number 5,3.
Recommend counsel.
Pardon me?
Recommend counsel.
Recommend counsel, excuse me. Yeah, we're just recommending approvals to the city council. Thank you.
I'll, I'll go ahead and second that for discussion.
All right. All in favor?
Well, is there?
Well, a second for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does anybody want to? I saw, I saw Commissioner McLaughlin's hand up, I didn't know if you wanted to discuss it.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to make, I'd just like to understand, this particular project, because of the way it's been set up in lieu, it's going to impact the project that's on First Street, correct?
That, oh. That it could, it could impact, there's, there was a general reference by the developer that, that said that the fees would go towards the AmCal project.
Right. So therefore, if the fees are phased, is it going to impact the AmCal project that we, that we spoke about?
If the fees are phased, then the phased fees will go, the phased income will go to AmCal project, or the housing authority will have to fill in, fill the gap, if that is the choice of the city council at that point. So this really, I must stress to this planning commission, this pro, this hearing is not about the AmCal project. So I really, actually, really would like you to avoid getting in a discussion about the funding of the AmCal project, because that's a whole different talk, and a different topic.
Understand, I understand. I just, I'm just trying to, you know, understand that it is an impact to the housing.
We don't really know what the impact is to the AmCal project. We do know that there was a preference stated, that the money go to AmCal project, and that there was visibly an agreement among the council. We do not know, if this gets phased, what will happen to that. That's really the truth, truthful answer to that.
And I guess the last, the next question is, the question that was brought up, or the point that was brought up from a legal point of view, as to whether or not the city is on, is on the hook, is that, is that something that has been discussed?
No, that hasn't happened. Plus, I haven't had the chance to research that.
Okay.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, I just, so, I mean, I don't know if this is within the purview of what you guys know at this point or not, but at this point in time, this project that's before, let me take a step back. The project that inspired this amendment, and it's in lieu fees that it would be contributing, whether all at once or in phases, these are not the only affordable housing funds that the city has. So we're not starting at zero and just rubbing our hands going, "Please, please hurry up and pay so that we can get going." There are funds in the process. And if I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but my understanding when we did the, or when we recommended that council amend the housing opportunities ordinance, the idea was units were not being built already. There's funds there, but that the idea that, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, part of the inspiration for some of the amendments that you brought to this commission and later to the city council was so that we could actually jumpstart getting housing, affordable housing constructed, and we had funds coming in. The pipeline provided kind of that in-between area of providing fees or building the units on site. Going forward, there's really not going to be many that are being able to exercise this. This is kind of situational to the pipeline, but at the same time, we have fees ready to go for projects. Nobody's going to be waiting around really for these, correct?
Well, your question is a little bit compound, so I'll give you a compound answer. This, because if the ordinance is amended, it will impact all future projects that will be approved, if they, if they opt to pay the in lieu fee. But the difference between this project and pipeline projects and future projects is that the future projects will be subject to the $15 per square foot as opposed to $9.35 per square foot, if there are 21 units or more. However, if you recommend, and the city council adopts the amendment as proposed, future projects that will opt to pay in lieu fee will phase their in lieu fee. That's really the only difference that will happen. However, they'll be subject to the in lieu fee as it will be adopted.
Right, so they're not getting the pipeline?
No, they're not getting a pipeline break, and they're not going to get a discount in the in lieu fees. They will be subject to the entire in lieu fee, except that they can pay it in phases.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Yeah, we did.
I second the motion.
Okay. So all, I think that with that, we can vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
So we have?
We have an impasse.
We have a, two votes in favor and two votes opposed, with Commissioner Alderetti and Commissioner Verino, Chairman, Chairperson, Verino absent.
In the event of a, of a non-decision, what we typically do is we'll prepare a staff report that will present the positions of both sides of the commission and bring it forth without a direct recommendation.
Translation on that?
The council, but no recommendation of that commission. Explain the vote.
Okay. All right. Very good. By the way, for anyone who's here that have parking, we can validate the parking.
Yeah. [applause]
Moving on to item number one. This is the time and place for the public hearing on item number one for site plan review number 2016-02.
Wait, so that's, is there a staff report?
Isn't that the first one?
I mean, is there a presentation?
Staff will now make a presentation on this item.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bauer. Good evening, members of the planning commission. This is a presentation for site plan review number 2016-2 for the Volvo of Orange County project at 1400 South Dan Gurney Drive.
One, one second. So just, just for clarity purposes, is this a public hearing item?
Yes.
This is not listed as a public hearing item.
Oh.
It's a, it's an item on the, on the business calendar. The commission has the option to request a presentation from staff if they desire.
I, I'm sorry.
Do, do we want a presentation?
Unless staff, I apologize, Ali, you're correct, and Commissioner Becerra for pointing that out. We, we're not required to have a presentation unless the commission has requested it. Has anyone requested?
I believe the staff report was adequate, but that's just my thoughts.
All right.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you for pointing that out.
Get a break, Ali, come on.
Nice going, Ali.
So do we have any written communications on this item? So I will go ahead and close the public hearing on the matter and bring it back to the commission for any comments or questions? Oh, there's no, I'm sorry.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving site plan review number 2016-02 as condition.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The measure passes unanimously with Commissioner Alderetti and Chairperson Verino absent. So we'll move on to item number two.
Now, Holly has to make a presentation.
Yes.
Sorry, Holly.
So this is the time and place for the public hearing on item number two for public hearing conditional use permit number 2016-22.
Tonight I bring before you a project called the McFadden Public Market Restaurant. It is located at 515 North Main Street. It's a conditional use permit for indoor, commercial indoor recreation. John Chen's requesting the approval of this conditional use permit. He is available this evening for later in the event that you have questions. The site is mid-block on Main Street, right in between Fifth Street and Santa Ana Boulevard. It is off, the building is often called the Arcade Building, but is historically known as the McFadden Public Market due to its association with the McFadden Brothers. As you can see, the zoning is SD84 with a transit zoning code downtown area. It is completely surrounded by office-type uses, including medical and dental offices, commercial offices, with a parking lot immediately to the east. Here is a look at the front elevation of the building. You can see it's got three arches. The applicant is proposing to have a restaurant within the building. It's been previously entitled for after-hours operation, for banquet, and for a type 47 ABC license. What the applicant here is proposing is to add another component to have the restaurant be more successful. What they propose is to have the restaurant open from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner, but along with the, the actual restaurant activities, they will have also 80's style arcade games, Pong, Donkey Kong, things like that inside to provide an additional amenity and uniqueness to the restaurant to draw people there. This is the rear of the building. The parking lot is, has a different ownership, but it currently serves that, that building and that land use. This is the floor plan. It does not show any of the seating arrangements, because those are, they can be moved, although the applicant is proposing some permanent-type seating, little nook areas where people can sit and linger and have a drink. The kitchen services, as you can see, are going to be on the first floor, and then there will also be a bar service on the second floor, along with seating and dining area Staff believes that this indoor commercial recreation use is going to provide us services by offering an additional recreation use, and will also thereby make the restaurant more successful. We think that any, the conditions of approval that we propose, that you see at the end of your staff report, will mitigate any potential for negative use, and of course, state law does apply in terms of curfew and minors. The McFadden Public Market is, will offer a really unique experience, I believe, to patrons, both locally and people who come from afar, and we recommend approval of this conditional use permit.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Have we received any written communications on this item? All right, then with that, the public hearing, I'm sorry, public hearing is now closed. Do we have any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Vice Chair, I just, just for clarity, so this is the CUP only for the indoor commercial recreation, and not the alcohol, not the, anything else, just the indoor commercial recreation? Okay, well, I, I just wanted to say out loud, I appreciate the investment in this building, I appreciate the name, McFadden. I mean, it just, it's a nice tip of the hat to our, our history. I mean, William Spurgeon and Robert McFadden were both essential, not only in Orange County history and Santa Ana's history. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and just make a motion to adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number 2016-22 as condition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, aye, all in favor, or all opposed? All right, the motion passes unanimously with Chairperson Verino and Commissioner Alderetti Congratulations and good luck on the project. Now, this is the time and place for the public hearing on item number three, variance number 2016-06.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Up for discussion before you is variance number 2016-6 to allow for a parking variance at the Bristol Place Shopping Center located at 3300 through 3398 South Bristol Street. The property owner is requesting a parking variance to allow approximately 24,000 square feet of existing vacant and leased tenant spaces to be converted to restaurant uses. In conjunction with the parking variance, the property owner is also going to be making several modifications and improvements to the site that include demolishing approximately 1,500 square feet of existing building area to accommodate a new outdoor dining area. They're also going to be installing a pedestrian path to link all of the buildings within the center, and will be making improvements to the parking lot, as well as restriping the parking lot. Since the proposed uses have a higher parking requirement than the existing uses, a variance will be required for approximately 29% reduction in the required off-street parking requirement. will be required for approximately 29% reduction in the required off-street parking requirement. The site is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Alton Avenue and Bristol Street. The site is located within the C4 Plan Shopping Center zoning district and is surrounded by residential uses to the north, west, and commercial uses to the east and south. As depicted in the site plan, you can see there shaded in red the location where the 1,500 square feet of existing building area that's going to be demolished with the outdoor dining area to be constructed. The proposed pedestrian path will connect all of the buildings that are along Bristol to the buildings there at the southern portion of the property to the main Target building there on the left. Here's some photos depicting the site as it exists today. The site is anchored by Target with the remainder of the tenant spaces occupied by a mix of restaurants, retail, and service uses. To determine if the existing parking provided at the site can accommodate additional restaurant uses, the applicant provided a parking demand analysis prepared by a traffic engineering firm. The study looked at parking patterns and demands for the site with additional food uses and also analyzed peak times and peak, peak times and peak demand. Based on the analysis, the center's parking demand is 473 parking stalls, which will allow for a surplus of nearly 200 parking spaces. As a result, none of the surrounding sites should be impacted with additional food uses at the site. Additionally, the applicant is implementing a parking management plan to maximize parking available to customers of the site by directing employees to park in designated areas at the center. Based on analysis provided in the report, staff recommends the planning commission approve variance number 2016-6 as conditioned. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. Have we received any written communications on this item? All right, with that, the public hearing on this item is now closed and I will bring it back to the commission for any comments or questions. Commissioner Becerra.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just one question. So in light of the previous item that we had this evening in regards to timing, phasing, et cetera, on, first of all, I just want to say that I appreciate that in the conditions of approval, we call out the bike racks being required. So I appreciate that. But what I want to make sure I understand, both for the applicant and just for all of us collectively, it says on condition five, prior to occupancy of the building, following items shall be completed. So currently, the shopping center has occupied spaces. So, I mean, are we saying after this approval, then the first, I guess, turnover in tenant would trigger all of this? So let's say he's got somebody ready to go, then we're, he's got to tell them to hold up until all these improvements are done? Is there a set timeframe? I just want to make sure we all understand the same thing.
They'd have to be in place before the first re-tenanting of the space to the, to the restaurant uses.
So, so I guess it would be after it's, after approval's confirmed by council, it would be that next subsequent tenant turnover then, that these would have to be accomplished by?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'll entertain, entertain a motion on this item.
I'd like to, excuse me, like to make a motion to approve variance number 2016-06.
That's it? I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously for zero with Commissioner Alderetti and Chairperson Verino absent. Thank you.
Thanks for sitting through the whole thing, too.
Again, thank you for the patience. Moving on to absences, do we have a motion to excuse the absences of Commissioner Alderetti and Chairperson Verino?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Alderetti and Chairperson Verino absent. Staff member comments? Are there any staff member comments?
I wanted to remind you all that we have no meetings in the month of August, and so you have a vacation. I wish you all well and we hope to see you all back in September. And I wish to apologize to Commissioner Becerra for not answering your, your question directly and clearly, so. Anyway, we'll see you in September.
Any other comments? How about the planning commissioner comments? We'll start on my left. Commissioner McLaughlin?
I just have one comment. I mean, not to say that you're taking a month off of August, but there seems to be a number of projects that have been approved in the last year as to, you know, what, what's been going on, but it doesn't seem like those projects are, in some cases, moving. And I just kind of like to sit there and kind of see if we could do a real simple, not in-depth, but a simple recap that says, you know, here's what's been approved in the last year and here's what's moving ahead and just to, I mean, we, we have all of these things in front of us, we do all these projects, we do all these approvals, and then some things, some of these projects move right ahead, some of them seem to die. And I'm not quite sure, you know, what, what's causing that. And I'd like to just kind of get an insight on that if that's possible.
So are you requesting a list of the projects that were approved last year and the current status of them?
Yes.
Building plan?
Yeah.
We'll provide you with that in September.
Yeah, I don't want it to be a burdensome situation. I just want it to be something simple and straightforward to just understand, because I get asked, you know, by people, what, what happened to that project that was going to happen, you know?
If it's okay by the commission, we can, what we can do, we can separately create a memo occasionally and just put that as a separate, as an item that we can put in the pocket of your binder so that it doesn't become an official reporting, but it becomes more like keeping you informed.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Any comments? Commissioner Gardner?
Great job running the meeting. I was not envious. I had two hard meetings in a row, so looking forward to a vacation in August, so that's good. We'll see you in September.
Thank you. Commissioner Becerra? And thank everyone, I appreciate the bearing with me tonight. It was a little rough, I know, in moments, but I appreciate all the help. With that, we will adjourn.